Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville, Texas, to be held today, Wednesday, Tuesday, March 12, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Mary Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Richard Conda.
Here.
Councilmember Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Brenda Trupinio. Councilmember Yunan Edmanis.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Briscoe.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Pritchard.
Here.
And Councilmember Robert Vinyah.
Here.
We have a quorum, so let us all stand for our invocation, as well as pledge allegiance. Mr. Fausto, can you lead us in invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord God, for all your wonderful blessings, for the life that we are able to celebrate today, Lord God. We have for your blessing upon this council meeting here this evening, Lord, upon everyone here, Lord, that is involved with the seating one form or another, to make this city grateful, to make the city prosper and move forward. I ask you for your continuing blessings upon each and every one of the council members and administration and staff here and employees here in the seat of Pierceville. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations. To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone signed up for citizen to be heard?
Yes, Ms. Matt White. We have Lady Caesar.
Okay, sir.
How are you, Caesar?
Hi, thank you.
Council, just want to come by and check with y'all. We've got eight days in now with big blue trucks, and want to see if anybody had any concerns or anything I could take care of. And saw a few blue cans intact.
Okay, awesome.
So they're starting to switch out the commercial cans, as we told you. We've had a few hiccups. Residential running smooth, we still got Martin on the back of the trucks, showing the new driver where to go. And the commercials, we've had, it's where we've had a few hiccups, but they work Saturday. Anybody that missed, they're coming back to get. So I just wanted to come before y'all and say if you had any questions or anything I can do for y'all.
Well, at this time, we can't really ask questions, because this is...
Oh, it's fair.
Yeah, unless you're on the agenda, because the citizens to be heard, so we'll hear you.
I didn't hear you.
But we can't respond. We'll have the city manager get back with you if there's any problems.
Okay, but let him know, and we're enjoying the transition, and it's going to get bigger and better, but just give us a little time, couple of weeks, to find all the addresses and take care of everything. If we do miss anything, we'll make sure we come back and get it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Anyone else? All righty, then we move it on to item five, action to consent agenda, 5A, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of minutes for February 19, 2019. This is an action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
You got it. Okay, all in favor? I show hands. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve minutes for February 19, 2019.
There's a motion on the table. May I have a second, please, if you're still in discussion? All in favor? I show hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're moving on to items, the new business, 6A, discussion and possible action regarding requests for a city sponsored by the Freo County 4H Clay Busters for the South Texas 4H shootout event utilizing hot tax funds. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Sir? All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, we may have one or two representatives from our group here tonight, so we'll start with that, and then we'll go over the committee review after they finish.
Is there identifying factor?
Yeah, to be... In order to speak, you have to be 18 and under. No, just kidding, whoever. Aww, how cool.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jackson Beaver, and I'm here on behalf of the 4H Freo County Clay Busters. I serve as the club treasurer on this team, and joining me tonight is Troy Allen, Dustin Allen, Jed Smothers, Riley Smothers, Luke Coleman, Randy Brown, Matty Brown, my assistant here, Mark Arwin Kane. I'd like to start off by saying how thankful I am to be on this team and for the many social opportunities and educational benefits it has provided. This upcoming shoot will be our third consecutive shoot of having it be two days with a Wisband qualifier on Friday, which will hopefully increase the number of shooters staying overnight. Last year, we had 150 people attend the shoot, including those from faraway places such as Orange Grove, Edinburgh, Crockett, and Spring Branch, Texas. Three years ago, we also had a number of out-of-state participants come down and see what we're about. Last year, the City of Pierceville contributed $6,000 to assist with the purchase of clay targets. The contribution helped the club to buy new machines and establish scholarship funds for graduating seniors. This year, we are going to purchase $5,000 worth of clay targets, and we humbly ask the City of Pierceville to contribute and ideally fully cover the amount requested. However, we will be very grateful for whatever amount you're able to contribute. In addition, in our second year running, we were named 2018 Texas 4H Shooting Sports Games Shotgun Championship County of the Year.
Awesome. Questions?
Madam Mayor, in addition to the presentation, of course, you guys developed your criteria this year, and we developed an evaluation form to go with that criteria. We kind of, we had six people that are supposed to review it based on the criteria that you adopted. Two of the people were unable to get their criteria along to talk to a funeral night, the other one is out with the flu. But the four that were able to go through and score their application based on the criteria that you developed, out of a possible score of 100, the average score was 86. So they scored extremely well in all the categories that we had to kind of go through the criteria to make sure that the money was distributed well. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to add your questions.
No questions.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the South Texas 4H Shooting Sports event for the full amount that they requested, $1,000, from the hot funds.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, I show hands. You have five and one abstained. Here. Okay, five to one, motion pass. Congratulations, guys.
Isn't that same?
I mean, uh...
That's not conflict, you abstain.
Not abstaining.
Against.
Against, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, no, not against.
Oh, not against, then motion carries unanimously.
No, but I had a question.
Oh, you have a question? She has a question, I'm sorry. So before we...
I had a question of, um, on the amount of money that was made last year from the... I know, uh, what, uh, y'all had eight people in the rooms, right? Is that what, that's what I'm going by?
They reported...
Eight people?
Yeah, they reported eight rooms, um, last year, that's correct.
Yeah, and it did make an estimate of what, like $100 a night for that night?
Yeah, probably so.
Yeah.
I think, you know, one of the things that we looked at in the application this year, I know that this is one of the things we're going to talk to them about after, after tonight, in the application of this, that they went to the teams and they talked to them about a special rate for the members, whatever. I think one of the things that's happening with this, all people aren't staying at the motel, that they're picking, that they didn't want rate with, and they didn't get where they're asking all the hotels to do that discount. And I think maybe last year, they asked them all, did get a discount, right?
Some people that I think that offered them the discount, but they went to the Holiday Inn because they were rewards member of the Holiday Inn, so that did happen, doesn't it?
That happened to us on some events, too, that they're rewards member someplace, or this thing.
And the Hampton was the same way, several people were over there because they were rewards members over there.
And although there wasn't that many that stayed in hotels, almost everybody ate here. The Garcia's Restaurant was nothing but 4H shooters and parents, so they're spending the money there as well.
One of the criteria was also advertising for the City of Pierceville, for, in order for us to sponsor, that they need to advertise that we are a major sponsor, so I would like to see more advertising in the paper, anywhere, everywhere.
There was an article in last week's paper, I believe, right, Adam?
Yes, it took up the top there, the Farmer Ranch page one, was a full narrative, and then this week we'll have a end color ad, I think on page two, and it'll run for this week and up until April 4th.
And they actually, if I remember right, they purchased a banner that they paid for that they put up at the event, that says the City of Pierceville is sponsoring the event.
Yes, that's true.
And that one, we put our banner up there, too, but I think they purchased one that they put up with the park. So that's two big banners out there, too.
How much, how much are y'all estimating of people that are going to be in the rooms and stuff? Do you more or less know how much, how many?
Well, that's a, it's kind of hard to guess, and one of the things that we did do this year is one of our Friday events, is that is an event that's sought after by a few contestants, and so by having that on Friday, it really inspires them to stay overnight. So we're looking for significant increases. Last year was, it was a rough time, you may recall, we had some great inclement weather, it was cold, and nobody wanted to do anything anywhere. I think there were some events going on in town that were struggling as well, so, I mean, we expect to have a significant improvement, but as far as assigning the number of that, it would be, you know, biased for me to take a shot at, because I don't really know.
Yeah, and I will attest that, because I cooked the briskets for them for that event, and I was out there overnight, and it was breezy, cold, and that's for, everybody pummeled around the smoker instead of, pummeled around the side of the table. I said, "Well..."
We sold more coffee than we did soda water.
Yes, Councilmember.
So this meets the 90-day...
Yeah, they turned in everything in time. They have a good budget.
Awesome. Any further question, concerns? Okay.
You already voted?
We already voted, it was, it was unanimous. Okay, congratulations, guys. Thank you. You going to stay for the meeting, or if you'd like to exit, it's not a good idea. They were waiting, they...
Congratulations on your boards.
Thank you, guys.
It was all ours, no, y'all need to come back. All righty, where are we? B, consideration. And hospital action to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Pierceville and Freo County for 911 addressing services. Action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, standard interlocal agreement between the City of Freo County, we're required to provide 911 addressing for every block, parcel, whatever we have inside the community. Cities never have the equipment to do this, the counties always have the equipment to do it, and they normally take the lead in doing this, so this agreement would, would put them as the primary responsibility for providing it, and tell us what we have to provide to them to be able to do it. So it's standard agreement for most cities doing it, the county. So recommend it be approved. No cost, it's a, it doesn't cost a lot.
That's what I asked.
It's an annual thing.
That's not yet. Yeah, they get, they get funding through the state.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement for 911 addressing services with Freo County.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. All righty, item C, discussion and possible action regarding the adoption of the Freo County 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item, discussion, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss. Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, sure, we read all 400 pages of that mitigation plan, so I don't have to talk about it.
Twice.
But mitigation plan is a responsibility for the county office of emergency management to have in place, has to be approved by the state, has to be approved by FEMA. The main thing is, it's a plan for if you have some kind of natural disaster, basically what it is. The most important part about it is, if you're going to, if you're going to be eligible for FEMA funding if you have a natural disaster, this plan has to be in place. If it's not in place, you're not eligible for FEMA funding. And so, and the county puts it together, and anybody else in the county, any other government, the county has to sign off on it. So basically, what they're asking you to do, right, is to sign off on it, so that they can get their, the rest of their approvals to the state. They've already been, FEMA's already reviewed, if FEMA said it was good, so they just need to get the rest of their approvals, so if we do have a disaster, we're eligible for funding.
Awesome.
So recommend it be approved.
Okay, need to entertain a motion, if you don't have any questions to ask.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the Freo County 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion on the table, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Carries unanimously. All righty. Item D, discussion and possible action regarding Community Development Institute Head Start Request for Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, the community developed Head Start, Institute Head Start, and we do remember a few months ago, we did a contract with them for the Head Start, so they can operate. I wanted to request that they have as part of their operational plan, that they have to have a secondary, stationary, in case they have a fire or something like that, of where they lead or where they go to, just like you do at a school, where you have assigned parking lots or assigned places where the students go. They have to have an assigned place as well, it's not part of that property. We own another piece right beside it that has a parking lot, and what they're looking to do is to utilize that parking lot as a secondary, so they have some place to get out of the building. Have to have it in their plans to be able to get their funding. They waited a long time to ask for it, we just got this in not too long ago, didn't really have too much time to, to work on with them, but it's just a couple of fill-in-the-blanks, I don't know how many children and adults they have in the buildings, and they're going to have to provide those numbers, and then we'll just put in the contact for City Hall in a contact spot. So something they need to operate, so recommend it be approved, enter into a MOU with them for emergency sheltering to be another property, another city property right there.
Is there, is there anybody eligible to adopt?
No more liability than, no more liability than already have, it would be as much liability as what we have with that being in the building, I would say, or something after the building, we'll have more liability. By doing this, I would say it would reduce our liability, because we're giving them another option in case something happens. So I would believe it would reduce it.
What, what parking lot are you drafting?
It's one right across. She explained, she means, it's...
It's two.
Yeah, it's all this category, I can't think of what the address is, or what, but it's...
It's an open lot, is it?
It's a vacant lot that they use as a parking lot, but it's not, yeah, it's used as a parking lot, I think, for other things, but it's not, it's not a paid parking lot, it's an open lot.
Right.
Because they got to have something to get out, there's something.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we entertain a motion to address this item, please.
I'd like to, please, go ahead and approve the, the Committee Development Institute Head Start Request for the Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding. Go ahead and accept.
Okay, there's a motion, may I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All righty, we're moving on to, to item E, discussion and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2019-03-02, entering to the amended cost sharing agreement and costs number 18-09-00349 CBF style, South Texas Electric Cooperative, Inc. versus Freo County Appraisal District. This is an action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, third version of this agreement, um, the first one, you guys entered into with the other MBEs, and we did the second one, as a hospital district joined in, and said they want to be represented, but there was a change of one word that the hospital district wanted, I don't even know what the word was, it sounds irrelevant, it seemed like it was absolutely irrelevant, but I think it was important to them for somebody that they're not allowed to do as a hospital. So this is the third amendment, doesn't change the financial responsibility or anything, just changes that word to their, their purposes. And we're running out of time on this thing, if they, so I told them, this time, you can't change it again, y'all better be good with it, because we're not changing it again. Everybody have another 10 days or something for the response to be entered. So, the last agreement, they sent out an email, "Emergency, got to get it done," we were the only group that wrote it. The rest of them were all dragging their feet, and then the hospital district came back and said, "No, we got to change one more thing," so everybody's trying to get it done.
Okay.
And this final version out, so we can get the response to it. So recommend it be approved.
Okay, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
It says entry into the amended cost sharing. What, what is amended?
They added one word, and they're, and they said something about how the hospital district was, was made in here. The second one did a bit of the cost because it reduced it, because the hospital district had more of the cost, so from what we originally proved, the second one was a reduction in our total cost. This one didn't change costs.
Madam Mayor, so that, that number that's dedicated in there, that's our percentage, 7.9, that, and that's, that's in the share.
That's correct.
I'm thinking that that was consistent with what they were telling us.
Right, and the first number we saw was eight something or nine something, when the hospital district came in, they shifted it a little bit. It reduced ours. That time, this time, it doesn't change. It changed the cost share, it just fixed something they were worried about more.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address Resolution Number 2019-03-02.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 2019-03-02.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, I show hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding Cover Charge for Annual Cinco de Mayo Event. Action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, so now we've got the program opening over with, and we're moving on to the next event, starting to look at what's going on down the road, so the next big event will be, well, not the next one, but the, this one, that we were already working on, Cinco de Mayo. Last year, the council approved, I think it was the, the money for the ticket sales, approved charging at the gate for the first time, and approved, I think it was the money from the beer vendor to go to Main Street for the revitalization fund, and sit there to do work on Main Street apart or something like that. When we, when you guys voted to do Cinco de Mayo this year and establish a budget, we didn't talk about whether you wanted to do a cover charge again, and if you did, where you wanted the money to go. So that's why this is on here, so we can, you guys can decide if you want to do a cover charge, if you do what amount, and where, where you want to save it. It could go, that makes you fun again, it could go back into the, to the hot fund budget, or wherever you guys want, whichever, whatever place you want to put it.
How much was the admission last year?
The admission was $5, the ticket sales, we made $6,855. We made a little over $1,000 on the, off the beer vendor, and then the money for the vendors went to the, went into the general fund, and there was $1,175 on the vendors. So between those three things, we made about $9,000, a little over $9,000 last year.
So we, other communities have, you know, bands, do you have any idea what they charge? Like, I know the Wild Halls, how much is the admission there, like?
$20 to $30.
Okay. And what is, what about the Coatis Strawberry Festival? Even I know this is...
It wasn't that much to me.
Last year was 20, it was 25 to 30 for Randy Rogers, because I was there, I didn't know what it was budget to get in.
Was that at the grounds, or at the, um...
The dance.
At the...
That was on the fairgrounds.
On the fairgrounds?
Oh, because they do the Civic Center and that, two different, two different venues. They used to do the pavilion and the old BMW, and then we used the old BMW, and then moved that out to the Civic Center.
Yeah, to the Civic Center.
Okay.
The strawberry festival's about that much.
Yeah, this, well, this is not as grandiose as the strawberry festival, but just curious...
Well, if you walk to the strawberry festival, you're going to see three, four, five, six bands during the day, plus whatever else, by the time you get to the gate, you're, you and somebody else, by the time you get to the gate, you spend $100, so you get to the gate, and you pay for parking, and you pay for tickets, and you get it. Personally, eating a drink, you're, you're $100 already.
Does it have to be at the Civic Center, though, the Cinco de Mayo? It can't be at the, at the new park, at least this year?
I don't...
The only thing is where parking?
Yeah, the parking's a concern. Well, I think you were coming to the park last year, we had been parked lossily, we had parked, we're going to do a second event, Appleton Park between now and then, and we'll talk about that in the, in the, we got a new event planned for that park already.
That's where we, they've usually had the fiestas many years ago, and, and we didn't have the parking that's there now, and it was always packed there, I mean, packed.
Well, there was a lot of discussion last year about, you know, until, what, two years ago, three years ago, there wasn't a Cinco de Mayo event here, period. It was always an event in September. There was none, it wasn't Cinco de Mayo that got created here on Main Street or something else. But before we got the park and everything renovated for this year, we had already budgeted and planned for the Cinco de Mayo event, so maybe this year might be a year to transition, do the Cinco de Mayo event at, at the Civic Center, but do us, do some kind of an event in September at, at Appleton Park, also a transition to that and get away with Cinco de Mayo for next year.
Because the park has the playground for the little kids and people who play as well.
I would say, I mean, there was a good turnout this past weekend, you know, after, during the day that the kids were all there and everything, you know, they really, there was a lot more people out there.
You know, just another thing, everybody needs to keep this in mind, too, the Cinco de Mayo event, probably, there was a lot of people drinking, a lot of alcohol at that event, and you've got those, you know, you've got all the playgrounds, the kids, and I think we have better control over that at the Civic Center than we do, we don't have trees for people behind, you know, we have a little bit better control, takes less people to keep up with everything in the Civic Center than it does over here, that's why I think we start with something small in September, and then try and see how that goes, and figure out how, because that park's a whole different structure than what it used to be, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of other stuff that people will be doing, that I think we're going to have to really do some security planning for that park, for an event where there's going to be a lot of alcohol. But that's up to you guys.
Okay, so now we're just discussing the cover charge, so...
Cover charge and where it goes.
Cover charge and where it goes. Cover charge, if you want to have one, where it goes, if you just have.
You can leave it the same, increase it to 10, or...
Well, I'm, I'm appreciative of what it was last year, so I'm prepared to make the motion that we, we charge the same, the $5 charge, and then allow the proceeds to go to the Main Street program, develop our Main Street.
What about beer vendor? Obviously, there's also beer vendor, money off the beer vendor, there's money off the...
Those, those three things.
Okay.
The same as you did last year, beer vendor, the ticket sales, and the other?
The vendors actually went to the general fund last year, which we, we got the fix for, we can... Okay. Okay, so the vendor fees, if it doesn't go to Main Street, it needs to go back to the tourism one, instead of going into...
The, so there's, there's the beer, there's the vendors, and there's the gate.
Right.
Okay, so I'll restate my, last year, the vendors went to general fund.
General fund, yeah, we need to put it something else.
We need to put it something else? Okay, my motion's going to say we put all three in Main Street.
Okay, there's a motion, and then you have discussion or question?
I have discussion, yes, before we move on. Okay, remind me exactly what that money's being used for, and we put it in the, in the, the Main Street. What, what is it being utilized for?
Right now, it's sitting there, because we haven't started on a project on Main Street yet, so it's sitting in a revitalization fund for a project to be done on Main Street. The, the grant fund was a different thing that you guys funded, the facade grant program?
Right, I think that's where I got in a little...
The facade grant program was funded out of the general fund, and so that's one thing, but the revitalization fund is still sitting there, because we haven't seen a proposal The facade grant program was funded out of the general fund, uh, and so that's one thing, but the revi, the revitalization fund is still sitting there, uh, because we haven't seen a proposal yet from the board on what they would like to see developed. What we discussed at that time was, was trying to build that fund up so we can start trying to build the parks that you guys set aside on Main Street.
Alleyways.
Those three alleys, so we can try and build the parks and do some stuff that would bring more people down, down to Main Street. So, if you, if you, if you chose to do that again this year, put that money in that fund, you're probably looking at by the time this, because there wasn't only, it wasn't only Cinco de Mayo, remember, they also did a fundraiser at Fourth of July. And they made some out of that, there's eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars, or there's something like that right now. So you do one more, you're probably getting up pretty close to, you know, around maybe twenty-five thousand dollars, but one of those pocket parks in there, then, then you're gonna be, actually have enough money to, to be able to do something like that and try to get something else that draws people down. Down to downtown, you know, downtown, someplace they can sit, a little social type area or something, that's gonna start to bring more people down.
Is each year it builds, builds, building, fills up?
May I ask you my question? How much was in it now, so, about eleven thousand?
About like that, something like that, it's, we can find the exact number real quick. The top of my head is between eleven and twelve, I can remember.
So, so the committee, the committee has, has agreed that they, they want to build these, these alleyways, is that correct?
They don't, they have, the, the...
Did they have discussed that issue?
And whatever, whatever they would recommend would come to you and you guys would approve.
Did we have any kind of estimated cost on one of those pocket parks?
We have, we have a little bit left here.
My guess is that that's probably not gonna pay for one, though.
Oh, but another round.
Another round like that money, yeah.
You have, or you have a motion?
We have a motion, waiting on the second. Now the discussion is over.
I, I have a question.
What, discussion was over?
It was, no.
I said was, till now.
Anyways, I, I thought we were getting the park ready, cause we were gonna, like, have a fiesta there. Are we gonna have one there?
That's what he just said. DC.
Cinco de Mayo?
No, no, DC, say DC, something smaller, and then see how security goes, and then go to...
Well, first of all, we should be discussing this on...
Yeah, we can.
So, I'll, we put it on the agenda to talk about that next one. When we set this originally, uh, for that event, it was set for there, if you guys want to change it, it's mine. When we, when we originally set that event, it was set for there, we go kind of for there, uh, right now, we're...
So it's just covered charge, right?
Yeah, covered charge.
Somebody mentioned.
I was just concerned about the fund.
Well, that's a fair question, cause that does, if the cover charge, if they're asking about the funding, it's mine. I think that's a fair question, that, that fits into the, I change it, if it doesn't fit into the cover charge.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table.
One second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Alrighty, uh, moving on to G. Discussion related to, uh, national accreditation of the Pierceall Main Street. This is just discussion, no need for, um, a motion, so.
So such a huge audience, everybody can have one.
Okay, so back in December, um, December twenty-first, back on December twenty-first, I, um, submitted the ten point criteria to the Texas, um, Association, and, and we got this on February, what is it, February twenty-first, that the city of Pierceall got national recognition for 2019. Um, if you look at the third page, it shows you all the, the sixty-eight cities that did get national recognition in Texas. Um, the, the other city that got into Main Street in 2018 was Cinco de Mayo, not on this list. It's really rare for the first year, uh, Main Street cities to get on national recognition, so this was a big deal for us. Um, it's really positive view of Pierceall, and this is something that I was really, really proud of. Uh, we got a score of ninety-seven point nine-two out of a hundred and seven.
Very good.
And then, and this will be displayed at the conference in Seattle, um, March twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, whenever you get there, they do a presentation showing everything in the nation that's got national recognition, so we will be honored.
Good job. Good job to you.
Well done.
So she took one out, that the, the temple was accepted the same time that we did, uh, they're not on here, but there's also some other cities on here that I think the, 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 not being on the list is a, is a pretty glaring, um, positive for us, which all of this on that list, and they've had Main Street for ten or eleven or twelve years.
Oh, they're not already nationally?
No.
It's every year.
So, yeah, it's every year.
Oh, it's every year?
But they, they, they're not on the list, and if you look in South Texas, um, really, us, you've got, we're a little, uh... There's a bunch of other cities down here that have, have, have Main Street, uh, program. As you go east, you see a few King Bill's on there, and there's a few that pop up to the east. Uh, but even a lot of the cities right above San Antonio, you don't see a lot of them, but how they make sure, they'll stay along this list.
And one of the other things that this is really good for, um, anytime you want to get a grant, um, having national recognition is really good, pretty, it gives you a foot in the door. And being that we didn't have this last year, we were first, it was our first year, it basically did give us a chance, so now we have a foot in the door for any kind of grant, if you want to push for that. If, after you're there longer, you have a better chance, but at least now we do have our first step.
Also, now we're applications, nationally, nationally recognized, applied, which end up on... Uh, the first grant that we looked at, it was ten points out of twenty points. Um, and we were, we were seven and a half points short of putting in for it, and that was ten points to give. So, they're actually the same grant again this next year, we're two and a half months ahead of someone else, um, that actually got the grant. So it's a big, it's a big thing for me.
And how much are the grants usually?
Quarter million dollars. There's four, four of the, of the CDBG grants are quarter million dollars, and it's been the same four cities that we get them every year because they're the only ones involved. So, that'll make us competitive with those cities with those grants.
Can you, can you coordinate to this?
Well, this is one of the criteria, the grant. That, that's how long you've got a Main Street program, and you get the points for the number of years, uh, but one of the things that lots of you did is, 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 are you nationally accredited, if you've done the ten point, uh, criteria, and if you can't answer yes, you lose ten points off that. So first, you're only applying for grants, but you gotta have a chance to do this yet, and so, that's a big zero right before we start. Uh, this year, that'll be a big ten before you can start, so it'll make a big difference in the grant application this next, this next year, big difference.
Awesome. Thank you, congratulations, thank you. So, we're moving on to executive session, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter five by one, Subchapter D, five by one, point zero seven one. A, discussion regarding a possible closure of Creole County Jail, B, discussion regarding the city manager's role and responsibility. Entertain a motion to go into executive session, please.
Go move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Time is seven thirty-eight. No action taken in executive session. Entertain a motion to return from executive session, please.
Motion to return.
Second.
All in favor? The time is eight twenty-three. Discussion regarding a possible closure of Creole County Jail, no action, as well as discussion regarding the city manager's role and responsibility, no action taken. Open session. So, item nine, managers' report.
Madam Mayor Council, um, the twenty nineteen Pierceall Hot Tax Bill, which was the bill that we asked our, our legislative committees to, uh, file with legislature on behalf. So the racket bill for expanded use of hot, hot tax revenues in Pierceall is gonna be referred to the House Ways and Means Committee. At this point, it is not being calibrated yet, so we're tracking the bill daily, and have a parable team to provide testimony on the bill once it comes forward, so we're hoping to get out here to the Trump Committee. File to both houses, um, Senate doesn't take up tax bills unless they clear the house, so it's only moving through the House of Representatives, if it gets through their passes, then the Senate will take it up. So House Ways and Means will be the first stop, it was, it was referred to Ways and Means to begin the block six, we should hear something quick about being counted. Uh, finance report, uh, finance, finance report this time.
Madam Mayor Council members, we have seen both of your reports up there. Uh, we are currently at forty-one point six seven percent of the budget. Um, year-to-date, as of January point eight, seven nineteen, our total past due bills is two hundred and thirty-two thousand with ninety days out at one sixty-eight thousand. We are making way with the, the disconnects and people coming in with payment payments. We have made our first, um, round of payments for debt, for March first, most of our debt gets paid out. The only one is a lease payment that's gonna be done, um, tomorrow. Our cash on deposit is currently at three point four million with one point three million in the general fund. We do have a deficit of one, a hundred and forty-five thousand in the utility funds, just remember, because of all our debt, our funds are dwindling down for right now, because of the motion. Over to the right, the abnormal current taxes were at eighty-six percent, the delinquent taxes were three percent, penalty charges cost twenty percent. Our city's sales taxes at thirty-seven percent, max beverage taxes at forty-one percent, uh, franchise fees is at forty-eight percent. Down at the bottom, the year-to-date for your general fund, we have a net over five, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, our net over for utilities as a whole is three thousand. Um, and then it separates it by water and sewer funds, for net over, uh, two hundred and seven thousand, the gas fund has a deficit of twelve thousand, and your garbage fund has a net over twenty-nine thousand. Our month end for general fund and utilities funds, our revenues, we, we received nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, our expenditures is one point eight million. Again, because of all our debt that has been issued out, so that has a deficit of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. And those are all our debt payments that have been taken out in March. We'll pin it again at the end of the year in September as well. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, on the deficit of eight hundred forty-eight thousand, so we eventually will recover?
Yes, we're covered. If you look at your year-to-date, your general fund, we're currently at five eighty-three, cause we, of course, expend what? If we receive, we expend those expenditures, so right now, your date is five eighty-three. Your month end, just for the month, we don't receive that many revenues, but our expenditures have been very high because of all our debt that comes in, so that's just the month of your, of March that it shows. But you can look overall, your net over is by five hundred and eighty-three thousand, which we're okay right now.
That's all those bond payments?
All your bond payments.
Or why the expenses are always so high?
And how are we doing sales tax?
We'll talk about that in the next item. Any questions on the finance report? Any other questions? Okay, item number three, city sales tax, um, it appears that the comptroller's office has finally entered all the businesses and duly annexed areas into the collection of, of Pierceall. For the month of January, we're just paying this month, cause we get sixty-eight thousand, the total payment was two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. We're getting very close to our monthly budget target of two hundred and eight thousand, three thirty-four, so based on the two point five million that we had in the budget for sales tax, we need to collect two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars a month, and this month we did two oh one, two eighty-one. Uh, March payment is, is historically significantly lower than the February payment, uh, this year it was higher, uh, which hopefully suggests we will see some significant increases in the coming months. Currently, at this point, halfway through the year, we're about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for low projected sales tax revenue, uh, that equates to about four point six percent. It appeared we may see that percentage shrink over the remainder of the year, hopefully, however, we will be meeting with the directors to discuss, uh, contingency plans for the budget to address that, that slight shortfall this week. So we're gonna, we're gonna back up and say you can't go over a certain percentage of your budget until we make sure that gets met, that is, we'll get methods reserved in a month or something. Joint meeting with Creole County and the City of Billy, the joint meeting between the city, City of Billy and Creole County, uh, one of the best meetings I think we've had yet. The county's in the middle of an interlocal agreement, and we're not here, not here, and sleeping possible for many hours. Situation with the jails, of course, still a major concern, uh, we'll be monitoring that situation as it progresses. It will be imperative for the cities and the counties to continue to work together on this issue. Uh, Pinto Park re-grand opening, this past weekend, we had the re-grand opening of both Pinto Park, complete with new parking, skateboard giveaways, professional skateboard instructions, food trucks, and live music. Nothing but positive comments and words of praise to the park, uh, for what has been done there. Want to thank all the employees for the huge effort at the ends of the road, getting everything ready to go, our special thanks to our park director, Roberto O'Tetto, for driving that ship and making sure that we got everything ready to go for that day. And as I told you, Ramon's unable to be here at night, he's definitely found it, um, he's been getting lots of hats on back to get that project done. Uh, the Tobias judgment, an additional lawsuit, city staff completed making the payments required under the Tobias order to the plaintiff's attorney. We're now completely done with that lawsuit, uh, further, the lawsuit in Segovia versus City appears off of last year's elections, is set to be dismissed by the court for lack of activity. As you all remember, we won the hearing in that case, it's been pending since then, waiting for the plaintiff to do something to move it forward, uh, nothing's ever been done with it, so it's about to be dismissed, so that's another victory for you guys. Hoppy Easter egg hunt, the City of Pierceall, Pierceall Main Street Board, uh, Pierceall Police Department, and the Pierceall Fire Department will be hosting our inaugural Hoppy Easter Egg Hunt on April thirteenth at Pinto Park. We'll have over five thousand eggs filled with candy and toys, some eggs will also include a golden coin, which the lucky holders will be able to exchange for complete Easter baskets. The Main Street Board will be working with Main Street businesses to get the filled baskets donated for this event. Anyone wishing to donate baskets can talk to our Main Street director to see what is needed, we're hoping that we'll have at least a hundred baskets donated before the event. That was the extra event I was talking about, at that facility, and that's only a month away, a month from tomorrow. Uh, street work, we continue to work on the streets, now that Tobias payments have been made, we can balance the rest of line items and see how much more street work we can get done this year. Uh, we have three more streets that will be resurfaced starting either at the end of this week or next week as part of the CTVG program, uh, that will continue with intersections and additional street maintenance here around the thos. Uh, the twenty eighteen audit, we continue to work on the CAFRA for this year, uh, this huge process is getting close to completion. We will have the final version ready to present to the city as soon as possible. The audit and financial report has been submitted to the city clerk and is available for inspection, per the requirements of the city charter, uh, was submitted on time from the first time over this year. Uh, a new personnel policy, I wanted to, I've been asking you guys for forever, and I just couldn't find enough time to get it done. Uh, I completed the draft version of the proposal for personnel policy for the City of Pierceall, been forwarded to the city attorney this week for review and comment. Once he's finished his legal review, we'll present it to the council for final approval, the current policy is from a long time ago, and it's a dire need to be updated. And that'll be the last one of the policies that needs to be done, and that's all I have.
Madam Mayor, I think, I'm sorry, did we pay Tobias?
We did, it's all done, everything's done.
And that'll show up in March, that one, if February?
That will show up in March.
Two, two hundred thousand?
Hundred ninety-eight, one hundred and forty, yeah, on the overall project, total one ninety-two, one ninety-eight, one ninety-eight, so we're not really, I remember, it's just under, just out of two hundred and forty. And, that, that's all we talked about, the finances, I think we talked about the big numbers for this month, because we had to pay all the, the bond payments and stuff. Next month, Tobias payment will show out of there, the final payment on the park will show out of there, and, um, and the H and E, um, three and E agreement comes out too, it's been paid.
So that's gonna probably be a deficit as well?
It's possible.
But just for the month?
Just for the month, because those big bills come out at that time.
Alrighty, moving on to review of deals.
Why are you looking at me?
We waited on you.
Joe review?
Yes, we do.
I have a question, yes, I have a question.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so, um, I lost a page. How many pages were there, six?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve pages.
Oh, I got six. What is, what is UniFirst, UniFirst?
UniFirst is our different forms of janitorial supplies, it's weekly, uh, all the dive uniforms that they, they're walking around in.
They work in.
Hydro Pro Solutions, what is that?
Those are our mirrors.
Mirrors, a lot of mirrors. Meters, okay, a lot of meters.
Is that the least agree?
Or, so this, so this, right now, we just purchased some additional meters, and we'll talk about that at the next meeting, what we're gonna do with those we purchased.
And there's, uh, something else I have. Oh, question on, I think we have, uh, I don't know, maybe some of these suppliers are unique to, to, uh, to, uh, is it Polix? They, they may be the only ones that carry them, but do we do business with the tractors? Tractor supply?
Oh, yeah.
Monies, they, 'cause it carries some of the similar, similar stuff?
Well, these doesn't carry a lot, uh, Polix and Parkers kinda carry opposite things. Uh, so, some stuff, you know, we get at Polix, some stuff we get at Parkers. We do go track, we have, we have a credit account with tractor supplies, we utilize them to, um, check prices. There are things, that's all, some of those things, they're, they all care, it's whoever has the most prices, that's where.
So this is for this month?
Alrighty, moving on to general announcements. Is your announcement? Moving on to, um, city council inquiries for agenda items. Anything you wanna be placed on the agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we can place on the agenda the, um, the drainage's.
The drainage?
Yeah, as an action item. Um, was anything, um...
The outcome?
Yeah, the outcome.
I think they went out for bids, and still haven't heard anything from them.
So you're talking about the drainage project on the bond?
Yes, mhm.
Would you?
No.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I also would like to see if, uh, L and V could come in and discuss about the annex as well, we haven't heard anything.
That's, that's on the next agenda. So, we've been, I've been holding that until we got the most and everything done over here, so we saw what, it was, well, the final cost was gonna be at the park before we started talking about, about moving forward over here. Just wanted to make sure we got all that paid for first, it's all we have left.
Okay, cool.
So that's, that's on me, that one on that.
Okay.
But we'll have that on the next one, on the April, on the April, June.
Yeah, I, I thought they had forgotten about us.
Can we, I have a little, can we put, um, the agenda of, um, to, about what's gonna be owed to, to the city manager? Isn't that, we can't, we can't.
That's not necessary, because it's just his.
It's just his.
Just his, um, what's entitled to him, so we don't have to vote on that. They're just like voting on a page.
Okay, okay. But we, we, we are gonna put about the, the advertisement, right?
That's a special.
That's a special.
This is actually a problem.
This is, this is.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Okay, um, I think we need to discuss, uh, possibly, what we are doing as a city to entice business, the business community to, uh, you know, I'd like to know where, what our status is with commercial rates for businesses in all aspects. I'm not sure if you're, maybe we're, maybe our rates for commercial businesses are lower than other communities, maybe they're not, I don't know. But, uh, I think we need to look at how we can make it to where businesses don't have, uh, are not having such a hard time getting targeted in this community. Some, some people are facing difficulty sometimes because everything is, the, the commercial rates are a little bit, uh, different, and they have to be in some cases, yeah, I realize that. But I, I wanna know, are we pretty much in line with other communities? 'Cause I know that the, the permit rate for just, uh, an addition to a commercial business, you know, I've, I've looked at other cities locally in, in the area, and some of the other cities are pretty much charging the same fees for residential permit, uh, addition permit, building addition permit, than they are for a commercial permit. And, uh, I know our, our rates are a lot higher here. So, I, I think, you know, as we talk about and as we move forward with Main Street and other projects and so forth, we may need to review some things, uh, is it, are we, are we in a position to, to entice businesses to get here and to open up? What, what, and I know some fees have to be there, but, uh, but we, but we're doing the best we can to get those businesses here.
'Cause you're talking about specifically permit fees, you're talking about utility fees?
I'm talking about everything that encompasses the overhead that a business has to put out, you know? The utility fees, the, the, uh, commercial fees for, you know, permits, whatever it may be. I, I don't know if that's been a deterrent to some of the economic, uh, situation in our town, but, I mean, little businesses move in, move out, you know? I think we're trading off pretty much, 'cause some close, some open up, and, uh, I, I just think we need to start maybe looking at that.
Do you need two others to agree?
I, I'd like to add to that as well. Um, I also wanna see if they can enlighten me regarding, regarding residential, uh, rental properties as well, you know, what it entails. I thought, I thought that all they needed to do was to get a, a, a licensed electrician and so on and so forth, but now they're doing walkthroughs, so I just need somebody to enlighten me regarding occupancies.
The, the certificate of occupancy?
Uh, for, for, for rental properties.
Okay, so those are two different things, so let's, this is a commercial property.
Right, 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 but it, it's still in the same, same apartment, it is not, uh, purpose.
Rental is.
But if it would be, but if it fall under different orders, um, there would be, well, yeah, we can probably, that's by now, okay, so there's could, pre, it could be a, a compound.
Question or item for agenda?
Well, I need to know if it's, can be as an item in the agenda, because I've been getting, I've gotten calls on vehicles and, and like boats being parked in the street to where they get to a stop sign and they can't see the passing. Is there like a ordinance on there?
Yes.
Okay, so, do they need to call over here and just report it?
Call the PD.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's all I need to know. It's just a question.
Anything else for the agenda? Alrighty, motion to adjourn.
So then, so did, did he not have to have the votes?
Yeah, I already did it. You too, you raise your hand, 'cause he's kinda behind you.
Okay.
No, you, she, Sonya raised her hand, and you raised your hand, so this too. Okay, motion to adjourn.